Okay, good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, January tenth. Uh Kelly, would you lead us? Wrong meaning that? Uh would you leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. And to the republic where it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. But I need to get there. Anybody from the public have any input while we wait?
Yeah, Mike Irvin out on Plana Highway. I'd just like to request that the court consider having public comment at the end of future meetings if possible. Thank you.
Fair request? I don't know. I think we can probably do that.
Makes sense. And you can follow up on anything or any type of discussion that was during the court session.
All right, any questions on the court agenda? Consent agenda?
I don't.
Suzie?
If you're muted, if you are trying to talk to us right now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. I, I, I'm aware of the consent agenda. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Snow must have gotten my voice here.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Carrie, is Bill filling in for John? Okay.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um Sheriff Gottlieb and I wanted to take a um little bit of your time to give you just a brief update as to some of the matters that are currently pending before the legislature in the short session relating to um drug laws um that I think will have an impact in Creek County. Um we've handed out the document um for the court. Um and that is from the sheriff. Do you want to explain what that is?
Uh the sheriff gave it to me this morning and it is from it's just information uh regarding what's going on and what's trying to be found.
So there are a number of um legislative uh proposals. There's some ballot measures. We don't have time for me to get into the nuances of all of them. I'm the sheriff um had a meeting today that he couldn't move. It was scheduled at ten. Otherwise, he would have been here today um to do this presentation. So the sheriff is standing in for him. Um but I wanted to go over kind of the the things that I think are being discussed that I think have tempted to gain some teeth um and some traction that I want to make sure that people are aware of the reality of that impact. Um so as we all know, measure one ten was passed in November of twenty twenty. That decriminalized possession of hard drugs, methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, fentanyl. Um certainly had unintended consequences with respect to the number of overdoses, the impact on our hospitals. Um really, the impact on our juveniles. We're seeing kids here testing positive for fentanyl. Violations were an E violation. It was a hundred dollar ticket. If they did an assessment, they didn't have to follow through with treatment. There were obviously funding issues with treatment facilities. But really, once the funding, and while it's not been perfect of getting funding in place, once that funding was somewhat provided to uh resources, uh treatment agencies, there's still no consequence. There's no, there's no teeth to force somebody to get into treatment. Um so what we're seeing is significant increase in drug use and overdose um in Oregon. We don't have great statistics. Um the crime lab, um the medical examiner's office is about six months to a year behind in just the overdose deaths that they're reporting. That will never encompass, those numbers will never encompass the overdoses uh that are not fatal. So those cases are having a huge impact on our hospitals um impacting the availability of treatment for uh for everybody in the community. Uh we're also seeing a significant increase in mental health issues. Um the hospitals are overrun uh with significantly mentally ill people. There is a significant correlation to drug use. Um in particular marijuana um has a pretty significant impact um on uh mental health uh with some of these cases that we're seeing. Um I'm working with the Oregon District Attorney's Association. I'm on that board. Um and Sheriff Gottlieb is working with OSSA. Is he the president?
He is the president of the Oregon Sheriff's Association.
Uh and so those entities, along with some other organizations, uh uh put forth some recommendations to the legislature. Um and what we want to talk about um some of those proposals.
So the proposal, one of the proposals that was presented to me um earlier this week was um so this one is if you, if we come across somebody uh who is intoxicated around the influence of controlled substances and in a public place, the officer may um send the person home um or take them to a sobering facility or treatment facility for uh by the sweep. Um that is going to create a hardship for us. Um if the person is incapacitated, uh then the the person shall be taken by the police officer to an appropriate treatment facility or sobering facility. Uh that produces challenges in this community because we don't have those readily available to us, number one. Um and then number two, um you know, our job more is if a crime was committed, who committed it? And there, we're gonna make sure that we document so that prosecutor's office could prosecute that person. And now they're, they're basically saying that it's our judgment call as an officer. If this person is under the influence or impaired or using drugs in a public place, you take them to a sobering facility and we're basically taking them into custody with no legal rights to do so, in my opinion. And taking them somewhere other than where we normally take them. Um and there's some other ones in here. Um a person shall be deemed incapacitated when, in the opinion of a police officer, the person is unable to make a rational decision as the acceptance of assistance. But if they refuse assistance from us, then we shall deem them as incapacitated. And then that's going to increase our use force with folks that don't want it. Um which then I would question what the governmental interest is in the use of force um that we have with them. Because we don't have a crime that's been committed at this point. And then, and then it goes on and basically says that if the person, uh if you take them to the, to the sobering facility and then they leave, then we can issue them a citation. It's uh and maybe jail's not the right answer for all of these, but it certainly could be under certain circumstances and they're they're eliminating that wholeheartedly. The other portion of that is, is think of the time commitment that the deputy's gonna have if they take them to the sobering facility and do all the steps that they've that they've lined out here. And then the person doesn't comply and then they expect us to go find this person again and issue them a citation. So then they can get into the criminal justice system to force rehabilitation is, is essentially what it is.
Um there are, so there's a number of, of options. The seventy-two hour hold uh that the undersheriff was just mentioning um is one of the options. The other is a deflection program, which I'm gonna talk about in a couple of slides. Um if we could go back to the prior slide. So uh preliminarily, there is a, I want the court to be aware that there is a proposal to fix. There's a couple of cases, Boyd-Hubble, um that eliminated the ability to charge possession unless you actually catch the person hand-to-hand transfer. So these are some examples of the quantity of drugs. Um the blue pills are fentanyl, some fentanyl powders, methamphetamines, firearms, scales um of uh and these are uh cases where these uh drugs, fatal drugs have been brought into our community. And we can't charge uh delivery because we don't have the actual hand-to-hand uh transfer. So there is some proposals that are before the legislature to fix that. Um my understanding is that the anticipation is that that will be passed. Um the concern is that there are proposals um from um some of the defense entities, um organizations to propose um reduction of the sentence guidelines, which really puts us back in the same position that we were in before if they're not prison-eligible or significant felony cases where we can address the significant quantities of, of uh toxic substances coming into our community, killing people. There are some proposals that uh want to put in a quantity amount if you're, if you have a certain amount, like put in certain, you know, weights um that we have to prove that you, you've attempted to deliver or you've delivered over a certain amount. Um there's some other proposals. I don't know how, it wasn't discussed the last legislative session um in detail, but some exceptions for if you're delivering for housing, which makes no sense to me. So I don't know how the state would prove that you weren't delivering for some sort of housing need. Um so that hasn't been fleshed out, but there are on the face of the legislation.
So let me, so you're saying if you're selling in order to buy a home, that it's not a problem?
I think what they're trying to get at is if you're selling to pay for your housing or something along those lines um is the proposal to uh it was just initially proposed without a lot of discussion. So I don't know what exactly the proposal is, but sometimes you can have a fix and then they unravel that fix, that legislative fix to the delivery on the backend. So I wanted the court to be aware um that those uh discussions are happening and sometimes there is negotiation that ends up with creating ineffective legislation um as it goes on. So that's why I highlighted um the delivery fix. Uh the next slide um talks about a couple of different options. So with there are legislative bills, um and there's also some ballot measures that have been proposed that have a variety of different um concepts. Um one of those is that seventy-two hour hold um that Bill was talking about. Um in addition, we have um the proposal for a class A misdemeanor. I want to spend some time on discussing that and, and um the uh kind of the whittling away um at the class A misdemeanor. Um any legislation that's going to be effective needs to include funding for community corrections. Bench probation is essentially my office trying to make sure people file, file the proper paperwork. It's not effective treatment. Um a couple of years ago, um the general condition of supervised probation of no use or possession was eliminated. That seems nonsensical to me in that we have people who are in the justice system when, with a substance abuse issue and yet we're, it's not a violation of probation to continue using. Um so we need to have some, some meaningful funding and some meaningful conditions that the probation department can utilize. Funding for treatment and specialty courts is essential. We know that those, that those work, but we need, they need to be properly funded. Um and mandatory treatment um needs to be part of it. Um there are options being discussed for diversions. We historically had conditional discharges um several years ago. The effectiveness of conditional discharges, meaning you enter a plea, you go to treatment, you're supervised by probation department, and if you're successful, your charge is dismissed. Um was really gutted. The legislature eliminated the ability to enter a plea initially. So a case was pending for potentially eighteen months. If they didn't complete, then we had to find the defendant and then go to trial at that point, um which is really a significant burden on the system um and not really holding people accountable either.
Uh I would just say, you know, the add to this is, is that we're gonna need uh increased funding from Department of Corrections for um our Community Corrections Department. There's four uh folks in there that are already overburdened with a huge, enormous caseload. Um and so DOC is gonna have to fund more uh money into uh our system so that we can add additional staffing so that these misdemeanor cases can be held accountable.
There is a movement to, a discussion to um to move uh possession offenses to a class C misdemeanor, which is a thirty-day max sentence. Um the Oregon District Attorney's Association, the sheriff's office is uh associate, OSSA um strongly oppose that. Um many people, when they are in recovery, um would be willing to do, and we see it all the time, where they're willing to do that thirty days and generally the less is imposed, rather than go through the hard work that it takes to get sober and remain sober um and remain on probation. So the um the possession charge needs to have sufficient teeth um in order to uh promote and require sobriety and, and compliance with treatment. Um what we've seen in this, in this movement of just asking people to voluntarily um get into treatment on their own, um treatment resources aren't necessarily readily available anyway, but when you're in the throes of addiction, you generally aren't going to go. Some people do, but the vast majority of people are not voluntarily um getting into treatment. So we're seeing um increase of violence crime. We're seeing increase of overdose. We're seeing um fatalities um regularly. It, it is not working. Uh measure one ten, as we all know, did not work. Um and um rewrapping it into this deflection program, which is really what the deflection program is, um is also I think going to be significant hardship on rural communities. Um so the deflection program requires, it's similar to, and it's kind of part and parcel to this sobering facility. Uh the, the proposal is to have a class C misdemeanor and um for possession and to require before that can be charged that the person enters uh a sobering facility or some sort of detox center um before it can be raised to the level of a criminal offense. Um I think that uh the undersheriff can talk about the risk that we are having law enforcement arrest people on offenses that are not crimes. I think it creates some liability for law enforcement.
Uh it does create a significant liability for us. We just can't do it. I mean, it's, it's illegal. Um and so the thing to add to that as well, it, that I would say is, is a class C misdemeanor under this Senate Bill forty-eight with the presiding judge's orders, um those folks aren't gonna stay in jail anyway. Um they're gonna get out and, you know, and go back to the behavior that they were in. The other thing that I would also say is, is that currently in the jail, we have an entire pod that is designated for mental health and what we're seeing in there is, is that this is, they're in a, a basically a drug-induced psychosis because the drugs are not the same as they were back in the day. Um you know, with the fentanyl and all the other things that are coming in, it's, it's creating um a lot more mental health problems. And we have an entire pod, which is, is causing a huge burden on, on the jail staff.
It also would require the county, I've been advised from some of the proposals that there's some money from CJC for stabilization centers, but certainly not enough to fund it. The other issue, as we've seen, um just with our mental health and substance abuse treatment facilities, we don't, they don't have staffing to staff um and provide uh these services. So to create uh this deflection program that conditions being able to even cite people with uh what they're proposing as a class C misdemeanor, that they go attend and go to the treatment center, then it places the burden on the treatment center to then report back to law enforcement that they didn't complete it. And then law enforcement's gonna have to re-go find that person to cite them back into court. And we just simply don't have the resources and this is premised on the same failed uh proposals and theories that were in measure one ten. And the reality is, our system is not set up um to to deal with this in a voluntary treatment program. It's not, it's not working. So I just went over um some of the issues that we have um with um with uh the deflection program. Um I think statewide, some of the bigger cities, maybe it's a viable option. I don't think it is um in more rural communities. Um and then uh what uh the sheriff and I are asking um is to, for the, the county court to issue a letter to communicate with our legislator um to encourage uh the legislature to um not impose these deflection programs to um to criminalize this as a, as a possession uh as a class A um that we order, that we fund treatment, that we fund supervised probation um and that we really put some teeth into these laws that can help keep our community safe um and keep our kids safe.
When you say we, you mean the state?
When I say we, when we are, I mean, law enforcement and the DA's office and being able to en- enforce the criminal activity that's associated with drug use. Um when, what I'm asking for um for the county court is to join, um the sheriff and I are discussing uh writing a letter. I would ask the, and I've been talking with with representatives as well about concerns from my perspective. Um but I'm asking the county court to consider writing a letter um to the legislature to voice the concerns that I think that it will have on this.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a total scourge on our community. And is there any um organizations that are looking to put it on the ballot? Because I'm all for writing a letter, but I have, every day I have less and less faith in our state government to do the right thing because they just constantly do the wrong thing. And so um I mean, I think we gotta shotgun approach, try everything. But are there organizations in the state of Oregon that are putting something? I mean, because I think if you were to put it to the people, I think the people that are dealing with these folks on a day-to-day basis um in their neighborhoods and different places, I think they might be a lot more willing to have some common sense and, and, and take a hard line on this.
I think there are ballot measures. Um the, there are new, uh obviously, we all know there are nuances to ballot measures. I think the vast majority of people didn't. They thought they were vote when they voted for measure one ten. The people I've talked to who voted for it thought they were, they were voting for funding for treatment. They had no idea with the wording of that ballot measure, what really was happening. So um there are a couple of different ballot measures, some proposed by Portland area. Um so the problem is, I think, going to be the nuances of those ballot measures and what those what they really do when you get down to the, the small print.
Okay, yeah. So I would pose that you guys put something together and we, I, I'd be happy to, Brian. I see his head shaking.
Yeah, I'll support. Absolutely.
And I'll get with the sheriff and, and uh maybe we can draft something and send it to you. Um I think the biggest piece is we wanted to get this conversation out in the open because I think a lot of people don't know what is happening um in Salem and kind of the, the, the undercurrent of, of where some of the voices are taking this, this discussion. Um both the sheriff and I, Bill, um we're all available to discuss. If anybody has any questions, even outside of this arena. Thank you.
Yeah. Suzie, you have any input?
No, I, I met with the sheriff yesterday and talked with John about this and, and yes, the thing about the letter came up and I strongly encourage it and you can get bullet points to us, so we'll send a strong letter. I'm sorry for, I'm sorry for this whole mess. I wish I could fix it, but no, I'm strongly support both of you, both the, the DA and the sheriff.
Great. Thank you for the presentation.
Yep, thank you.
Do we need a motion for, to do the letter or not until the letter's presented?
It probably would be best to wait until letters presented.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Kelly?
Good morning, Kelly Koffeld Airport Manager. Um what I'm looking for today is approval on the our DBE and GOAL Development Program uh for the airport. This is the uh program that is required by the FAA for receiving federal funds. We've talked about it a couple of times in the past. What you have in front of you is, is the full development package that'll be submitted to the FAA um along with the IGA that we discussed a few weeks ago with the state. It's a three-year program, uh disadvantaged business, disadvantaged business enterprise program for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. The goals are based upon uh the next three-year, the projects for the next three years at the airport. Um those possibly might change, and so there might be some adjustments in the next couple of years, but this uh sets us up for the next three years. I can go into more detail, but I think we've talked about it before. It's pretty basic.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, no, I'm good with it. We need it in order to take care of our airport. Need to FF, FAA requirements, so.
Right.
Suzie, you have any questions or comments?
No, no, it's been talked about and, and uh yes, it's a nice document. Thank you, Kelly.
Right, thank you.
Okay, entertain a motion.
There are two documents in there. There's an IGA plus the DBE program. Should we have two separate motions?
Probably, excuse me, what was it? IGA was already approved. Was approved, so the IGA was incorporated into this, this document.
So I'll make a motion to approve the DBE program and goal development.
And I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Eric?
Commissioners, what's in front of you is an agreement with the uh US Geological Survey to conduct a study of the Crooked River in the hopes of trying to identify the sources for a variety of minerals and isotopes um in particular nitrogen. Um there is concern that nitrogen levels in the Crooked River are too high and they are harming wildlife and fish. The hope is that by conducting the survey, we can identify the sources of that nitrogen. Once we know the sources of the nitrogen, then one or another different options for how to address the situation might present themselves. Um you recall that uh a few weeks ago, the county executed a funding agreement with a variety of different public agencies and stakeholders. The funds to pay for this agreement have been received. So the county is going to contribute eight thousand dollars. Uh the feds are going to contribute about twenty thousand and the remaining thirty-two thousand uh has been acquired from those other public entities and stakeholders. I see that Chris Gannon is on the line, so if he has any uh comments or anything I left out, um I might ask that he uh pipe up. Otherwise, I might recommend a motion to approve the agreement with the Geological Survey to study mineral and isotope flows.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good morning, Commissioner Staff. Yeah, Chris Gannon for the record, Crooked River Watershed Council. Um Eric summarized it really well. In fact, I'm, I want to uh acknowledge, I'm, I'm impressed with his ability to, to decipher the technical side of these of these documents. So uh Eric portrayed the effort correctly and uh we're just really excited to get it started. The sooner we get started, the sooner we get the results back and can take action on those results. Thank you.
Great, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the US Department of Interior, US Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement for Water Resources Investigation.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You taking over for Tom?
Thomas.
Now, hey, good morning, Judge Commissioners. Now, uh item fifteen here is requested by uh Thomas Laird, our weed master. It's uh the purchase of uh residual herbicides for the county's weed management program. There's a purchase order in your packet uh that shows the schedule of those items costing forty-three thousand five-ten plus shipping and regulatory fees. Those costs have been uh compared to other providers, including Wilbur Ellis um with the schedule of those items. Uh and the suggested motion here, if you want to move forward, would be to approve the uh contract with Helena Agro Enterprises LLC to purchase residual herbicides for the county's weed management program per purchase order number twenty-six in the amount of forty-three thousand five-hundred-and-ten plus shipping and regulatory fees. Glad to address any questions.
No, just wanted to get them out killing weeds.
No, just wanted to get them out killing weeds.
I make a motion to approve the purchase order for Helena for forty-three thousand five hundred and ten dollars for weed control.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, John.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, what we have before you is order number twenty-two four dash oh-two, which would adopt a new policy uh, that kind of lays out the procedure for evaluation committees to review, request for proposals and request for qualifications. Um, the impetus for this is kind of twofold, uh, at least since I've been here, um, we've had county council on all the evaluation committees, just to make sure that, um, you know, everybody went by the rules and we, we collected the score sheets and brought the recommendation to the county court. We are moving away from that where the, um, basically the department heads that are doing the procurement will be in charge with this new policy. They are the procurement lead and most of the tasks fall upon them, um, including the things I just mentioned. Uh, tried to draft the policy to be as, as kind of simple and straightforward as possible. The, um, you know, the, the main things for the evaluators is, you know, that there's no conflict of interest, that they aren't talking, um, with any of the proposers, they aren't sharing any confidential in- information until the, uh, decision is made. Um, like I said, just lays things out pretty cleanly. Uh, if there is any issues that needs county council support, the procurement lead will then come to us and we can get things worked out. Uh, and the, the second reason for putting this in place now is just one of the requirements, um, your F A A guidelines, um, for uh, something and airport consultant, which we are about to do, and so we're doing this in place before that, that process happens.
Very good, thank you.
Suzie, you got any questions?
No questions. Would you like a motion?
Sure.
I, I make a motion to approve order two oh-two four dash oh-two dash R F P Evaluation Committee Policy.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nick? Zoom in here, are you online, Nick? Is that one you got? Andy? Or John, sounds like you can.
Well, I drafted the change order, but if Andy has that kind of information.
Yeah, I believe this is, uh, related to some amendment to the Carlson Testing Inspection Services. Uh, the amount of this, as I recall, was under twenty thousand dollars, was it?
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, just under fourteen thousand dollars. This will take us through the end of the project.
Perfect. All right. Did you entertain a motion?
Make a motion for the change order number two to Carlson, S T Inc.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Christina?
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is a request to approve that Seth sign the Management Representation Letter for our audit. This is the annual letter that we provide to the auditors that contains a series of statements that, uh, confirm certain facts and assurances about our financial information, including the completeness and accuracy of our financial records, disclosures of relevant information and adherence to accounting principles. Um, so I will sign it, um, and then the judge will sign this on behalf of the county court. Uh, Legal has so nicely reviewed and made some updates, um, and corrections to the letter, and you have that edited copy in your packet and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, I looked it over. I just really appreciate how, all your hard work to get us to the position we're in now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's, it's, I know it's a lot of work to go through this and, uh, we really appreciate you doing that for the county and the citizens.
I'm excited that we're two months early than we have historically been, so.
Yep. Great, uh, I'd entertain a motion.
Okay, Christina, first of all, you're doing a good job and we appreciate you. And I make a motion to approve the judge to sign Audit Management Representation Letter on behalf of County Court.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Got anything?
Yeah, just three quick items, uh, yeah, just pass along again, the congratulations to Christina and her staff to be able to get this uh, report out as timely as, uh, as done. And it, uh, really was set up to be completed by, uh, year end, uh, a few hiccups that, uh, weren't really at all under her control. Uh, but to, you know, get this, uh, done at this time, I think sets it up very nicely to get it done timely for next year. Uh, I put at your place, uh, a letter from the sheriff's office, the, uh, jail staff related to the work of Brody over this past weekend. Um, you know, Brody did a outstanding, uh, you know, Brody Barker, uh, did an outstanding job, you know, this last weekend, uh, operating the jail or ensuring that the jail, you know, operated, given the significant weather conditions. Um, he's on call during that period of time. You know, did not have to, uh, call out additional, you know, help in this, I wanted to make sure that was called out as well as in the, the roads in the county have been taken care of very well. And I just appreciate the work those guys are doing. And I know they were up, uh, you know, late last night getting things set up for today. Uh, with respect to roads, uh, we received a few questions regarding a truck, uh, we, you know, belonging to the road department up at the top of the grade. Uh, checked in with, uh, them this morning. That truck, you know, has a needed repair. They'll get it hauled down to the shop, you know, here as soon as, uh, the conditions are better and less traffic and less of an impact. Yeah, that's it.
All right, anything from the public before we wrap up? Okay, on to executive session. Uh, we will now, now go into O R S one nine two six six zero two H, consulting with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current.